anthem to declare our meeting open officially and then deal with the primaries and then launch into what brought us to this hall or this place today. May we then stand up to observe the national anthem? And as it's customary, males take off their hats. Alright, so all up and may I invite the lead song to lead us through the national anthem. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. The time is now ten past ten. Let me just do the introductions. I said we'll start with the introductions. This is a meeting of parliament. Parliament is here at Sardana Bay to listen to the comments of the public on section twenty-nine, sorry, section twenty-five draft bill that was published in July, sorry, in January, published in January for both written and oral submissions, of course, starting with written submissions. And today, we are out in the public taking oral submissions. Because the process of written submission had its own period that has long passed and we now have those submissions in our office, in parliament. But in addition to written submissions, we thought it to be fair to go all out to the public and to take oral submissions. Before you today, representing parliament, I'll start with myself. My name is Cyril Aba and a member of parliament and a member of this ad hoc committee. And on my left, it's Honorable Rony Morawatsela. He is a member of parliament and a member of this committee. And on my right, it's Honorable Maynali Somah, a member of parliament and a member of this committee. And Honorable Noko Masipa and a member of parliament and a member of this committee. Those are members of this committee representing parliament to receive oral inputs on the draft bill that talks to issues of section twenty-five. I would indicate what those issues are. But also in attendance in this meeting, colleagues, we also have Honorable Judy Hermes, where she has walked out. She is resident here in Cape Town, also a member of parliament. I thought I should introduce her and just to indicate that she is also here in this meeting with us. Covid rules or regulations, as you know, that we are not allowed to exceed two hundred and fifty in an environment like this. So we'll observe the two hundred and fifty rule, two hundred and fifty participant rule. That in the event we have more people, more than two hundred and fifty, will try to make an arrangement that people in excess of two hundred and fifty will not be allowed into the hall, but will still receive their oral presentations. And we can only do that if they are able to exchange with those who are in the house who have already, you know, made their own presentations. But we'll try to manage that with you. And it doesn't seem that is an issue at this point because we were still under hundred by the look of things. But as soon as we start to exceed two hundred and fifty, we'll have to manage that carefully so that you are able to take turns. Those who are outside are able to come in and but you will able to come in if those who are inside give way to those who are outside. But we'll ensure that that happens in a manner that does not disrupt the meeting and would request your cooperation in that regard. If you are requested to step outside, to give way for a person who is outside to come in to make her own submissions, please cooperate with us and please understand that it's not out of respect, but is to ensure that we stick strictly to the rules or regulations pertaining the pandemic Covid nineteen. And in addition to the numbers kept to a limit of two fifty, we must ensure that we maintain a distance so that we try not, you know, act irresponsibly or conduct ourselves irresponsibly, you know, and end up unwittingly spread the disease. The disease is still amongst us and there is a report of a second wave coming and so we must not lower our cards. And it is in that context that we will still adhere to the rules, as it were. The rules pertaining to mask, to masking, they are still in force. The only time a person is permitted to drop his or her mask is when that person is on the floor and talking to us. And the team supporting parliament, parliamentary, sorry, members of parliament here, the support team is, would ensure that the mask gets sanitized every now and in fact would get sanitized every after the speaker has spoken. So that want to ensure that we, again, we are responsible in that respect. So those are the rules pertaining to Covid nineteen. And two fifty, we don't exceed two fifty, two, we maintain masking, three, we maintain social distancing. And then rules of engagement. And we've agreed that we are not in a competition and no person must consider his views or her views superior over the another person's view or views because we are not in any competition. So ours is to listen to you as you present to us how you feel about the text that has been published for public comments. And so we don't expect you to howl, to insult or to say anything that, you know, might actually offend another person. We're not in a context in any way. And two, no view is inferior to any other view expressed. And so we maintain a freedom of speech and that everyone is free to talk to us and express how he or she feels about the text that is before, that is in the public, that we have actually invited you to comment on. You may wonder why we are here for the second time. Let me just explain the second, the second coming. And the first team that parliament dispatched in the last parliament, in the fifth parliament, went all out to solicit the views of the public on the desirability of amending section twenty-five of the constitution. They were all over the country, listening to the public. And the public, in their numbers, said indeed, it is desirable that section twenty-five of the constitution is a clause in the Bill of Rights, must be reviewed and amended. That committee, upon concluding that task, reported to parliament. The first report went to National Assembly on the fourth of December twenty eighteen and then to the NSOP on the fifth of December, the following day, on the, on fifth of December twenty eighteen. That's the, that's the report now of the team that parliament dispatched. And that committee that was leading the process was called a Constitutional Review Committee. So the report of the Constitutional Review Committee then served before parliament on those dates that I've mentioned, the fifth in the National Assembly, sorry, the fourth in the National Assembly and the fifth in the NSOP. Parliament adopted the report of the, when I say parliament, I mean both the NSOP and the National Assembly. Parliament represents the two bodies. It's not parliament if there's no NSOP. It's not parliament if there's no National Assembly. It's parliament when the two houses have concurred on any matter and that requires the attention of parliament. Parliament agreed to amend the section twenty-five of the constitution, to make explicit that which is implicit in the constitution with regards to expropriation of land without compensation as a legitimate option for land reform, so as to address the historic wrongs caused by the arbitrary dispossession of land and also doing and show equitable access to land and further empower the majority of South Africans to be productive, to be productive participants in ownership, food security and agricultural reform programs. And parliament also agreed to urgently establish a mechanism to effect the necessary amendment to the relevant part of section twenty-five of the constitution. Then parliament, in its wisdom, constituted a committee to take this process forward. This committee now is called section twenty-five ad hoc Constitutional Committee, which is represented today while the other, I mean, part of the committee is elsewhere in this province, in this province, the Western Cape province. In other words, we are running a parallel process. One committee is here today, another committee is elsewhere. The same thing, when we were, would be in one place, the other committee would be in another place. So it's a parallel process, but those two processes then combine to make one process at the end of the day. As I said, this committee has deliberated since the resolution of parliament and produced the text. And that text has been published, as I said earlier on, was published in January and for both written and oral submissions. And as I said, written submissions, time came and gone and it is now time for oral As part of rules of engagement, we thought we should, we thought three minutes would be sufficient. If really you fail to say what you want to say in three minutes, it means that you are not going to say it. Three minutes would be sufficient for each one of you to make a representation to the committee. I would be supported by the staff of the legislature, sort of parliament. When, after I've pointed at you, they will then give you a sticker indicating that you have been granted permission to speak. So you not speak if you do not have permission to speak. You speak only when you have been granted permission to speak and the person who has the order to do so is a chairperson of the meeting because his task to maintain order in this meeting. So how we are going to do it would take five this side and then five, oh, like I'm sitting, I'm at the center now. I'll take five this side and then five this side, just to see how that goes. And then we'll come back to the second round. Maybe in the second round, depending on the hands, I will increase the numbers from five to ten and then from five to ten in the second round, depending how it goes in the first, in the first round. So for the first round, I take five and I also take five. So we are here to listen to you and talking to us. Now I grant you the opportunity. I'm not too sure if there are any recognitions to be made, but in the absence of recognitions or acknowledgements to be made, let me then start the meeting. Let me then start the meeting. And is it on a point of order? Oh, so you want to launch into the presentation? Alright, so, okay, are we all ready to launch into our, into the discussions now? Are we all ready? Thank you. Colleagues, now I take the four hands, I start with the four hands. And so are you ready, colleagues? Okay, the team is ready. I will, I will take you first. I'll take you first. Right, sorry, number two, second, first and second, alright, and then there are three hands there, yourself, Sisi, there on the right, just go to where they, yes, yes, that one is number three. Okay, you are number five, bluish, the bluish, yes, number, number four. And the sister on the right with the grayish jersey, yes, is number five. Okay, colleagues, this is the first round. Please don't, don't despair, I'll come back for another round. And I thought I should sit it just to see how it goes. And then I'm taking another five this side. Can we move to this side so that I keep the numbers, alright? In the beginning, I'll say you are number one, is number one. No, no, this one, number one, sorry, that one, number one. This one is number two. Number three. Number four, yes, in that order. Number three, number four. Number five, la, pa ya, that, yeah, number five. Alright, so you have got your numbers. So when I say number one, please tell us who you are and then launch into your presentation. So we keep the, 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 the time, yeah? And so now it's your time to comment to the committee. Thank you so much. So you don't have to form the queue, sorry, you don't have to form the queue, don't have to form the queue and but be closer. One, two. Right. That way. Man, bulela game kineskalo. Elam ikama game, gum, siabulela kama fenuka. Eh, otsala apa esal dana. Emi ghipos e wotwani. Ogo kala man tabatel tu ban bulele ipa la mente. Goguti. It, itadais tose ondo ban maklazyo lo, el kandelo, ni kadi twenty-five. Eh, olam ulufu, adizu, adizu, tetera ku. Diti olam ulufu, goguti, umsaba mautini mautuiswe, ebadi ngapado we mbuyegesu. Asitete ninto ke tina, guma, we, 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 we,[1616.01]
And I would like to ensure that everyone understand me. Indicates that I would like to add to subsection two, property may be expropriated without compensation. Subsection three, to be removed and replaced with the state should be custodian of all South African natural resources, inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize state custodianship of natural resources. Further to that, I would like to add to the amendment that subsection seven should be removed in totality. I thank you, Chairperson. Ba ya danke om i veri geleentek.
Right, thank you so much, number three.
Good morning, sir, everybody in the house. I'm Kathleen Rains, born and bred on the west coast. In the early sixties, in the early fifties, I grew up in Wikiscope, now Clippie's Door. And at that time allowed, where we was forcefully removed to the area where I'm staying at the moment, White City. Up, where there was a, a, a recommendation presented to Parliament, of which up till today, a claim was actually set in. But up till today, nothing has happened and we are still living in a third grade house. So to Parliament, my question is, if they do ask about land without compensation, where is the land that they're talking of? Or which is the land they're talking of? And that is the, the reason why I am here today. I'd like to know where is the land that they're talking of? Because still today, my people is still in poverty and I thank you.
Good day, huiya da, I says. Because I'm Jan Khoranial from the Tangwas and the Kogakwa, Kunnilka is from Odessa. So, I understand the amendment of section, section twenty-five, but as a question, I would rather hear us as the coy in the sun. As the first indigenous of South Africa, for us, we're, where is the land that the government can pray, that, uh, what, uh, what, uh, what, uh, what? Uh, on any of the land, of ground, it has three hundred sixty-six years of life. There are the European nations through the Dutch and by Britain. Now, if you talk about compensation also, without compensation, where is the coy in the sun of a kaham, koina? Still waiting for compensation from the white colonists people. So now, this government, ANC government, we ask you, you said without compensation. We wait for compensation for three hundred and sixty-six years. Our people, my foreign, my, my ancestors was killed, was robbed and was forcefully removed from this South African of, south of the Sahara. So this government must think again. And us, in a reply to our commands, we need compensation from the white colonists. I thank you.
Assalamualaikum, Mulweni, good morning, Chairperson and the panel in front of me. I'm Farinaz Gaffur, residing at Mahadala Farm in Fridendaal in the Maticama Municipality. Hereby declare that I support the amendment of section twenty-five of the Constitution to allow for the expropriation of land without compensation. This amendment is crucial for the decolonization of our society, for guaranteeing redress for colonial and apartheid land disposition in our country and for ensuring equitable redistribution of land in South Africa. I hereby also submit that the amendment of the section twenty-five of the Constitution should look at as follows. Number twenty-five, the property. Number one, the state, including Parliament, executive and judiciary, carry an obligation to redress imbalances of the past through enactment of laws that will achieve redress and equitable redistribution of all resources. Number two, property may be expropriation, expropriated without compensation. A, only in terms of law of general application. B, or in public purpose or in the public's interest. We remove section three and replace it with three. The state should be the custodian of the South African national resources, inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define, define and contextualize state custodianship of national resources. Number four, for the purposes of this section, the public interest includes the nation's commitment to land reform and to reform to bring about equitable access to all South African national resources and property is not limited to land. Number five, the state must take reasonable legislative and other measures within its available resources to foster conditions which enable citizens to gain access to land on an equitable basis. Number six, a person or community whose tenure of land is legally insecure as a result of past racially discriminatory laws or practices is entitled to the extent provided by the Act of Parliament either to tenure which is legally secure or to comparable redress. We should remove subsection seven and subsection eight should read as follows. No provision of this section may impede the state from taking legislative and other measures to achieve land, water and related reform in order to redress the results of past racial discrimination, provided that any departure from the provisions of this section is in accordance with the provision of section thirty-six one. Parliament must enact the legislation referred to in subsection six. I thank you.
Thank you so much. So I think we are done with this, uh, uh, section of the House. I now move to the left hand section of the House. I start with number one.
Huiya mora, good morning. Mulweni, sa bon. Honorable Chair and members of the committee, I'm Yannis Traoré and I'm the CEO of Agri Western Cape, representing around about three and a half thousand commercial farmers in the province. Chair, I want to thank you for the opportunity to express our opinion this morning on this very important topic in our country at this stage. Chair, we have submitted our written comments in February of this year. But thanks again to also attend this morning. Just to emphasize our opinion, we still do not believe that there's need to amend section twenty-five of the Constitution. Chair, agriculture was declared an essential sector with the start of the lockdown. No store ran out of food or food products during the lockdown period in our country. Chair, I want just to remind you and your committee of the very important job you have at this stage, to hear all the opinions and to come to a decision on this very important issue. There's a lot of emotion built into the land topic and we understand. But you need to differentiate between land for housing and land, productive agricultural land that feed our nation. Agri Western Cape stands for transformation in the agricultural sector and inclusive growth when it's based on proper beneficiary selection, economic viable and sustainable principles. Title D chair is non-negotiable. Please don't destroy the value of property and the importance of title D as the two very important requirements to obtain OPEX and CAPEX for your farming business. Chair, no finance, no farming, no business. I thank you very much for the opportunity.
First, danke voor die geleentijd om vandaag commentaar te leveren op hier. Het is belangrijke zaken waar jullie de grote tak hebt om te besluiten. Mijn naam is Louis Wissels en ik is rechtsprester van Agri Weskoop. Ons vertegenwoordigt ongeveer drie duizend vijf honderd commerciële productie in de rechthoek van de Weskoop. Voorste, ik wil beginnen te stellen dat ons ten genste is van grondervorming met sted op een volhoudbare en economische volhoudbare wijze gedaan wordt. Ik wil ook stellen dat ons steeds gekant is ten wijziging van Article 25 van de Koronet zoals wat ons ook schriftelijk ingegeerd. Het is onmoontelijk om vandaag een rechtsargument te leveren in drie minuten en ons stand bij wat ons in ons schriftelijke vertuig ingediend is. Voorste, ik weet het is nodig om, om je te herinneren. Ik wil toch beklem toe in de belangrijke tak wat je vandaag hebt. Een voorstel of een besluit wat gemaakt kan worden, raken de wijziging al daar niet van Article 25 van de Koronet zal niet nette gevolg hebben van een paar woorden op het document wat van andere wordt niet. Maar dit gaat die vermoeien van elke Zuid-Africane om welvaart te skippen in die landbeinvloed. De geschiedenis rechthoek van de wereld in specifieke, specifieke Afrika beweist dat zekerheid van eigenartschap welvaarts skippt. Ons kan niet besluit nemen of ik koestig om een besluit te nemen aan een landwons economie, klauwsjokken en werkloosheid bezig is om te stijgen wat eigenartschap verder verwalt er niet. Voorste, als ons emotie en goedkoop politiek uit die grondkoersie uital en ons kijk naar feiten zoals wat hij ingezet is en die gesagte wandel verslag van uit president mijn land le, zal ons zien dat grondervorming niet geval is als gevolg van de Koronet niet. Grondervorming het geval is gevolg van corruptie, onbevoegdheid en het tekorten op de wonen. Voorste, ik ga beïnvloeden die optussen dat ons is ten genste van grondervorming op volhoudbare wijze. Ons is niet ten genste van de wijziging van Article 25 van de Koronet niet. En ons vertrouw dat iemand die commenteer, die plek zal uitvoeren op een wijze wat gewerzel geeft aan die slaagsprek op die banierdaar achter dat elke Zuid-Africane zijn toekomst beter voor ons zal weten. Danke.
Thank you so much. We have the team capturing all the comments. And so you are invited to speak in a language that you feel comfortable with. We, because we are multilingual and we have facilities for translation and recording everything that is being said in this meeting because we value every opinion that is being expressed today. Thank you so much. Over to you, sir.
I am Yannisile Wibitimkotri, the member of the African National Congress in good standing. Uh, the ANC supports the land as a just and equitable process to restore our dignity as Africans. We are convinced that the past laws that were made in land reform failed dismally. One of them, if I may cite an example, willing buyer, willing seller. We therefore, as the African National Congress, feel that for transformational purposes, we submit on section twenty-five that clause one, four, seven, I mean, one, four, five, six and nine should remain as they are. Two, on clause two, we make the following amendment. We add a new clause. Clause two, subsection C, which must read as follows. Subject to without compensation or nil compensation under condition laid out in law of general application. Three, on clause three, we speak about property. We make the following amendment to the first line of the clause. Everything thereafter will remain the same. It reads as follows. Where compensation is payable, the amount of compensation and the time and the manner of payment must be just and equitable. Four, on clause seven, we make the following submission. That for the purposes of these hearings, only the text remains as is. Number five, on clause eight, we make the following amendment in the first line of the clause as follows and everything thereafter remains the same. No provisions of this section, including the payment of, may impede the state, may impede the state, I want you to note that. In conclusion, expropriation of land is a process to restore the dignity of the African people. The expropriation should be done in a executive authority and know when there's disputes, which cannot be, can be referred to the judiciary. I want to cite to you, Chair, an example as, as an, I'm an African, I'm staying in South Africa. There's a piece of land when you go to Freedom Bank, it's owned by Belgians, not by South Africans, by Belgians and that land belonged to South Africans. And it should be for the African people who have disposed of the land. We're talking about four hundred years. It is not fair, the constitution and even the, the sunset clauses that were that are forming part of the constitution, every clause should be amended to, to fit the plight of the poor Africans who are deprived of all the rights. Because the rights presently are favoring the, the gentleman that was standing here. They are defending their own areas. They are not worried about why we're still lying in poverty. I think the Parliament should amend this section to fit us so that we are also in business. It should not only be for agricultural purposes because South Africa doesn't have much rains. It should also to form part of economic purposes, meaning that I must own land so that I can make business on the land. So if you expropriate the land, I must go and make business because there are land, a lot of land that is reserved here so that when the state comes and they know they have to pay. And those people are making money out of the state and are milking the state. It's not fair. So the amendment must take place as soon as last year. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Chair and the rest of the committee. My name is Dionde Jaaker and I am from Afri Forum. And I'm going to present you Afri Forum's defense of property rights. The government says that expropriation without compensation is needed, that more black South Africans can own property. This is not true. The truth is that the government wants to own all the property in South Africa and want to give access to land mainly to the politically connected. The ANC's public statements and policy documents shows that the end goal is for the government not to be built to own the land. Look no further than the fact that only six point three percent of land bought by the government has been transferred to private ownership. The government tries to justify expropriation without compensation by saying it is a necessary step to undo historical injustices. But it ignores the fact that a land restitution program has been in place for twenty-five years, which has provided one point eight million black South Africans with compensation. The Retstitution of Land Rights Act of nineteen ninety-four makes it possible for people to submit claims for land that they had been deprived of as a result of racial discrimination such as forced removals. Eighty-two percent of land claims have been for urban, urban land rather than rural land. Over ninety percent of those who had submitted land claims indicated they were, that they were not really interested in owning farmland and that they would rather prefer money as compensation. The government has already spent more than fifty billion rand on land reform with very little results. The Mutlante Commission found that government inefficiency and corruption are major barriers to effective land reform. The government has indicated that it is not interested in transferring land into private hands but rather using expropriation without compensation as a tool to increase government control. This is why emerging black farmers complain that they do not receive government support. This is why twenty-three percent of South Africans already live in government-owned land and half of them complain about the quality of the land. This is why only six percent of all land acquired, acquired by the current government has since been transferred into private hands. It is quite disheartening that the motion to review section twenty-five of the Constitution ignored this fact about the real progress that has been made with land restitution and ignored some of the financial realities of farming. We cannot allow this issue to unravel into a racial issue. Unfortunately, the, the president already did this when he used the words "our people" to refer to black people. The deputy president, president also did this when he threatened with a violent takeover if whites did not want to hand over the land voluntarily. The government are possessed with, by ideology, the ideology of a national democratic revolution that is clearly failing. They are drunk on power because every decision they make is an attempt to gain more power and control. They are driven by hatred and contempt, not only
So we have sixteen hands altogether. I start with you. Number one, number one, yes. And number two can also move to take a front seat. Number three to take a seat, but I don't want people to form up into a queue. Right, over to you, sir. Introduce yourself and then launch into your presentation. Thank you so much, sir.
Uh, diabulela ngetuba ikamalam dumza my dort. If any, I beg. This is a lot to eoplan the freedom back. The bullet in a national parliament. Gosh, I need to send in the end of the body so I can get a lava. And my blazing, a west coast. When the apple, he parlayed the bands in me to figure that they call on us. So I bullet a long delay. The way member, the way member, he eff. It was a little bit of a silly, a little bit of a. Si bugle TV, no, I'm telling you, we implement, we implement. He leadership, he has him as Africa. No, but um, Java, my boy, he cares, we can get, we get. Laura section twenty five. She had clear that, you know, the puzzle. But I'll be a family, none of the parliament. You can be community, but I miss you in the banana. He offuna um, Java, and go home now. She offuna um, Java, who will he cares? Kumbandaba, my name, my beto, basoko layo, abacala, my child, your baby. Abatima, best, I tell um, Java, but to do, we, my beto, and rapapulete, but for my tea, I guess. So clear that Nina, but in the same parliament, new identity file, a long Java. Cuba, I'll call you confuse in the lava. Um, as far as me, let's go to um, Java, you own a race. UK government, um, me, and I put in a long Java, you own a race. See desperate, see community, as the west coast is a need to Java, as it rally. As well, I believe in the bar, in the sense, the guy, even go social media, there's a malengwin. Abadba desperate, but I need to Java, but it's telling the bar, you know, the pendulum. New implement, a long chat, a session twenty five, um, Java, my boy, he cares. Abantu, Bakucha, my name, my basoko layo, abacala, me, John, don't wait, we in like. We in four men, exactly men, plus, you consider each other, me, go, and I'm my name. Aba the small skin farm, abakoy always coast, now about me to Java, and go me now. And cause I'm Japan.
Eh, diabulee, so, one of the same parliament. Now, ikamalam, Elias Malodani. To suka if it make one, why two? In like a sin, I have five, if it make you one. Um, as far as I be sad, John, I, Kalas, so I expect in Galo. Do you wanna go to speak, Kalas, so we're apart date? Any business, yes, better, bah, um, bah, what do you want, you know, man's? I'm about to langa man's, who, that, that one, grand man, I only get just twenty units. Who's a, who's a, who's a, who's a? Maybe strike, you know, twenty eighteen. So I'm a striker, so. Kalas, but if you want, and I almost land, do you, it, 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 you know. He NC, I mean, I, if we get, she had clear about the same parliament. The time, um, as far as actually, um, by now, it's always come, 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 come. Did great.
Good day, Chairperson and panel, everybody else. Um, I first want to say something before I read this. I'm speaking as a white citizen in this country, a member of the ANC. And I want to say that, yes, this is an emotive issue for everybody. But foremost, for the black citizens in our country. Who have been put on the rear end of the stick for four hundred years. And it is time that this constitution has been amended to ensure that they get their land back. And I would like to say to Afri Forum, the speakers before, that, yes, commercial farming is a business. And that is what they are trying to protect. So that their generations thereafter can still have what they want to have. It is not about racial issues. It's about that they want to continue owning what they own. And it is time that our people get this. I thus say the following as a member of the ANC, and my whole family was, is in this. I Teresa Margaret Rousseau. I here with state the following. The ANC supports the expropriation of land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people. And that includes the black and colored people in our country who were dispossessed. I, it is a question, and the expropriation of land without compensation is part of that process. It cannot be denied. We are convinced by evidence that the willing buyer and willing seller model did not work. Because they refused to sell to our people. For the ANC land reform is about redressing the historical injustices. And the dispossession of the black majority, eighty seven percent of our people. And the land is not all owned by the state. That is incorrect. Four hundred and thirty five thousand commercial farms in South Africa are owned by a minority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock the growth and to promote the socio economic transformation of our people. The ANC's land reform program provides a radical way to address this. And build the productive assets for our people and ensure food security. And then I want to state this also clearly. The myth that black people cannot farm and that there needs to be commercial farms for us to have food security. Is a load of nonsense. Every person can produce their own food. We submit thus on the section twenty five clauses that one, four, five, six, and nine must remain as they are. On clause two, we make the following amendment, and it should reach, read as follows. A new clause subsection two C. Subject to without compensation or no compensation under conditions laid out in a law of general application. On clause three, which speaks about property, obscurity, property. We make the following amendment to the first line of the clause. Everything after that will remain the same. It will read as follows. Where compensation is payable, the amount of compensation and the time and manner of payment must be just and equitable. On clause seven, we make the following submission, that for this hearing, the text remains the same. On clause eight, we make the following amendment in the first line of the clause as follows. And everything thereafter remains the same. No provision of this section, including the payment of compensation, may impede the state. Thus, in conclusion, expropriation of land is a just and equitable process. To restore the dignity of our people. And I iterate again, that includes the black and colored people who were dispossessed. This expropriation must be done by an executing authority, the executive of parliament. And only where there is a dispute, which cannot be resolved, can it then be referred to the judiciary. Chairperson, with my final words, I would like to say this. As a white South African citizen in this country, that was born into privilege during apartheid. I state, without any, um, holdback, that it is time that we address this. White people have benefited and still benefit by the apartheid laws and the laws that were set in since sixty fifty two. It is time that our people get their land.
Sorry, the time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, thank you. Number, you're number four. What's number four?
He's number four.
Yeah, number four.
Yeah, and go, so, I could, I'm trying to, today, I choose Africans. To speak, to show that you are more than well in South Africa. Eh, I'm turned by Paul Salman, an ANC member in good standing from Route First Branch, Saldana Subregion. West Coast Region, and here in the Western Cape. Eh, the ANC support the amendments as follows. Eh, except that in Africans, we sure that once Afri Forum. Men say, and, 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 they're near mercy, so can also stand that also as ANC, and so, men, they can also Africans. Eh, once for another, Paul, and, in fear, five, six, and yeah, article fifty two, not, but, so, is that is. Two, op clauseile, two, still, us, the following, the revising, and, for, and, he was, of clause, two, C, by. What's, so, is, for, might, lay, under, ever, and, vergo, ding, of, never, go, ding, on, or, for, warders, it, in, goes, and. A wet, van, algemene, to pass, and, three, op clauseile, three, what, or, end, um, pride, ma, us, the following. For, was, going, and, the, erster, real, van, the, clauseile, alles, da, na, be, the, same, um, so, is, following, the, for, to, least. Where vergo, ding, but, pa, beta, bar, is, mo, the, bedrag, van, the, vergo, ding, and, the, tight, and, we, say, van, betaling, fair, and, public, we, is. Ends, place, two, and, three. Four, op clauseile, C, we leave, or, us, the, following, the, beto, that, slacks, the, text, for, the, uh, the, do, end, is, van, here, the, for, or, or, bless, us, that, is. Five, clauseile, A, mag, us, the, following, the, revising, verweiging, and, the, erster, real, what, the, clauseile, is, is, for, and, alles, da, na, ble, the, same, de. Gen, the, pal, and, van, here, the, after, and, sle, then, the, betaling, van, vergo, ding, mag, the, start, pal, America, ni, and, and, ten, slot, de, on, the, taking, van, ground, is. Rechverdig, and, rechverdig, process, on, the, wa, get, van, ons, mens, ter, ster. Here, on, taking, mood, dear, after, eat, for, and, the, sag, the, eat, for, and, the, sag, gedoon, word, and, slacks, where, da, dispute, is, ni, op, gelos, kan, word, ni. Can, that, da, na, the, rech, bank, for, we, is, word, place, three. Eh, I, still, so, for, for, sit, eh, but, just, want to pass a message, that our people have been deprived. Remember, the people of District Six and many other areas, where we're dispossessed over the years. The issue of agriculture, Chairperson, must not be used to deprive our people the right to be equal. We stand with white farmers as well, we are not anti them. We want to put it clear, we are not anti agriculture. We were the first people to farm in South Africa as Africans. The ANC support this clause as stated here, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairperson. I haven't seen anyone, um, welcoming the committee here. So I'd like to welcome you in Saldana Bay, beautiful Saldana Bay. And I hope that after, the, okay. And I hope that after your deliberations here, that you will take a walk around nice and beautiful beaches here.
Can you introduce yourself?
Yes, Hussein Padiachi from the Saldana Bay Black Business Alliance. Uh, yes, um, I think why the wall is not so full is because I think the communication didn't get through to all our people. Because I also received the notification later, and I was sitting inside, and made, uh, and made a few comments that I, I think we should, we should address. Uh, with regard to, um, this committee. Uh, we, as the Black Business Alliance, Saldana Bay Black Business Alliance, do support, um, land expropriation without compensation. And I think we should need to clarify some of our reasons. And one of it would be that, unfortunately, our friends here, or our compatriots, Afri Forum, Agri SA, Western Cape. Have left the, the meeting, because I think our comments are not important to them. Uh, we gave them the opportunity to talk, but, um, they don't see the need to listen to us as well. They've left. Um, we are used to the, the lies from these white, um, farmers. Um, saying that it was their land, they talk about the title deeds. Where were the title deeds of the people of the Cape flats? Where were the title deeds of District Six? Where were the title deeds of the people of black Africans that were dispossessed from their areas? Well, of areas and moved to places where you couldn't even really live. So then they do not, they do not even mention the word title deed when it comes to us. More than eighty percent of our people were dispossessed. Our land were taken away. People were hugely, um, uh, they lost their, their families. They were treated inhumanly. Nothing is said about that. They only talk about title deeds. Um, it is also important that most of them came here, the land was here, they didn't bring the land with their big and rickety boats to South Africa. But yet today, ten percent, about ten percent, roughly ten percent of the population of South Africa. Owns about sixty to seventy percent of the land in this country. It is hugely impossible to understand and comprehend that. Um, zero point, zero point, zero point, one percent of people, of a black people, colored people, Indian people, are owning land on the west coast. Mostly, if you go to any place, and I'm sure you do not really know, the west coast, to Langwell, to Saint Leonard Bay, to Outfield, to Freedom Bay, wherever you go. Left and right, you will see land that do not belong to our people, yet we make out most of the population here. Unfortunately, um, we need to rectify that. And I think your committee is one of those that will assist us in, in getting back the land to our people. There's huge, there's currently protests in the west coast. Have you seen on the news and newspapers? There is huge protests, protests taking place, not only about service delivery, but one of the main points is housing. If you go to Langwell, for instance, right around, lower, Langwell, and the west coast, there is huge swatches of land laying around. But our people are living in backyards, they're living in shacks, because there's no land available. But there's unused land laying around, around us. Thousands of hectares laying around there, unused, but our people do not have access to that land. So it's impossible that we can stand here and not support the bill, the current bill that is before parliament now. And we also need to look at the injustices of our compatriots that died in the struggle, that were treated inhumanly, that were tortured. So it is just appropriately that we, as, um, the descendants. And our fathers and our mothers that lost their lives, that we take this as obligation to support the bill. So that we can at least have something for our children, um, and our great, great grandchildren, um, and our descendants coming after us. Thank you very much.
Eh, thank you so much, eh, number six.
Thank you, for sitter. My name is James, I'm just a customer of Matshikama Municipality. Uh, but number in, but number one, the State Institute Parliament Executive and Judiciary carry on application to redress. Embarrassness of the past through enactment of laws that will achieve, redress, equability, distribute of all resources. Number two, property may expropriate without compensation. Only in terms of law of general applications for a public purpose in the public interest. Remove section three and replace with three. The state should be custodian of all South Africans' natural resources. Inclusive of land, mineral resources, and water, and relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and conditionally. And potentialize state custodianship of natural resources. Four, for the purpose of this section. The interest includes the nation's commitment to land reform and to reforms to bring about equitable access to all South Africans' natural resources. And property is not limited to land. Five, the state must take reasonable legislative and other measures with its available resources to foster. Conditions which enable citizens to gain access to land on an equitable basis. Six, a person or community whose ten, tenure of land is legally insecure. As a result of past racially discriminatory laws of practice is entitled to the extent provided by an act of parliament. Either to tenure, which are legally, legally secure to the comparable address. Remove section seven, no provision of the section may, 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 the state from taking legislative and other measures to achieve land. Water related reform in order to. Uh, what I will not say is that my pa, my opa, the name, it again, James. My opa, it, upon, Rania, ge, blay, on, the, da, ge, blay. And I was, so, no, Rania, af, ge, fat, and I was, go, sit, on, a, plake, you, my, the, name, van, hope, to. And, uh, from, I, take, that, I, my, opa, la, gai, is, what, was, up, ge, in, the, in, the, kind, van, Matshikama. So here, I stand, from, the, I, so, um, a, point, to, make, and, to, say, that, what, in, my, opa, se, te, ge, beer, it, ge, beer. But it is a, you, the, of, on, here, era, it, as, he, um, secure, to, make, that, on, the, generation, can, deal, like, van, here, the, land. And darum, is, on, is, in, support, with, six, and, twenty, five, so, so, he, stand, thank you, for, sit.
Thank you, my dear. Eh, number si- six.
Eh, my, the, bullet, eh, to, ba, um, Sally, I, I, eh, little, she, eh, no, kuba, kubu, is, eh, way, city, ma, some, the, my, ma, no, Africa. Go, go, ti, kubu, is, eh, way, um, Java, kuba, ni, ni, lo. And, eh, yam, anga, the, eh, um, Sally, I, I, eh, la, bana, si, man, eh, si, pinda, pinda. O, kwen, sa, le, session, ul, to, bo, ol, u, che.
Eh, o, 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 zet, o, li, de?
Oh.
Ah, and, can, o, zet, o, de, de? Can, I, be, so, pal, la, la, ba, ab, a, pal, eh?
Eh, kamalam, gumala, Johnass, di, pum, eh, Matshikama, di, lulu, kule, E F F. And go, so, I, kolo, ma, de, kubegi, eh, eh, eh. Sally, I, I, eh, di, yam, anga, la, obanga, ba, na, o, kulu, men, de, we, tu, ab, eh, ngati, u, ya, zulisa. O, ku, implementa, or, o, kubu, is, eh, la, um, Java, kuba, ni, ni, lo. Go, ba, get, la, she, kwen, kwa, kutatwa, um, Java, utwa, usibiwa, zange, kubeko, eh, me, go, eh, zukmila, kung, che. Wa, tatwa, um, Java, ngen, ze, la, eh, gen, al, usi, ni. De, at, and, u, cho, kari, ni, ka, ingelo, pa, kwa, ba, pezulu, ne, cho, ni, ti, city. Mapanga, kudinyalo, um, Java, si, a, offuna, obu, is, eh, way, kuba, ni, ni, wo, ngapande, kwen, bu, ye, ge, eh, and go, so, I, kolo.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and the committee. My name is Frankwood Peter Uster. I was born in Stellenbosch. Currently, I'm residing here in Saldana. Today, I speak on behalf of the first nation of this country. And I just wanna quote from the highest law. And that is from the word of God in relation to land reform in our country. Genesis, chapter one, verse one, says, in the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth. Underscoring the fact that God is the owner of everything. With Genesis one, verse one, also Psalm twenty four, verse one, says. That the earth and everything in it, the world and everything that lives in it, belongs to God. Then, another scripture that I wanna quote is from Deuteronomy thirty two, verse eight. That says, when the Most High gave the nations their inheritance. When he divided all mankind. He set up boundaries for the peoples according to the number of the sons of Israel. In other words, God was the creator of everything, gave land to people, and he set boundaries for them. Another scripture is in Acts, chapter seventeen, verse twenty six. And it reads as follows, in relation to Deuteronomy thirty two. God did this, in other words, God gave land to people. He did this so that they would seek him and peret, reach out to him and find him, though he is not far from all of us. And in verse twenty six, it says, and he marked out the appointed times in history and boundaries of the land. In other words, God gave land and territory to every nation. And as a descendant of the first nation of this land, I say that we are the rightful owners of this land. So the question, or maybe another statement that I think I should make. Is to say that it's been emphatically said by our forefathers that we are willing to share the land. I then further wants to state that before we take our claim, not just four hundred years ago. Before fourteen eighty eight or sixteen fifty two. But even from the, from the start of Earth, we were the original people here and are the rightful owners. And we knew, according to Dr. Ruben Riches, how to farm on the African land and how to till the soil. Today.
Sorry, my, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Can I just say, today, I agree with land reform. They must just clarify equitable and just. And I'm also against the fact that we, that the government should own the land. But people should get title deeds and have the right to purchase the land from them.
Thank you so much, alright. Eh, the eighth person, oh, you're number, number one, she was number eight. Oh, okay. And then your number one, eh, from the, this, from my left. Eh, you introduce yourself before you launch into your presentation.
Good day, Mr. Chair, um, Kevin Marth, from the Saldana Bay Black Business Alliance. And I also recognize Mr. Noke, eh, a member of parliament. Um, Mr. Chair, the Saldana Black Business Alliance support the amendment of the section twenty five of the constitution. And we actually believe that the slow progress of land reform thus far can be effectively addressed. If we can actually amend this section of the constitution. Because currently, we are sort of renegated to a status where we are Africans without Africa. Because Africa is currently owned by other people than the Africans. And I'm talking about colored Africans, black Africans, and all those within Africa. I'm drawing also my inspiration from the preamble of a constitution, which states, South Africa belongs to all who live in it. We believe land is an agricultural and also an economic asset that can unlock value for the previously disadvantaged. And assist with accelerated economic growth and integration into the mainstream economy. Um, we also want to ask that this law. Or the amendment should also cover residential areas, because we believe that. Areas like Clippish Dorb, that one of the previous speak, previous speakers have mentioned. Is currently sort of still out there without their land, because they owned part of the Saldana Bay area. And it was, they were actually expropriated, uh, under the apartheid laws, uh, in the fifties and the sixties. We also want to also caution against municipalities. That currently where there's vacant land, they rather sell it to affluent property developers. Instead of actually making it available for us to also, um, own land. Or live, or have properties within the, the richer white areas. Uh, what we also want to propose is that there is a system of checks and balances implemented. That ensure a fair and equitable distribution of land to targeted beneficiaries. And, uh, preference should be given to people who are in close proximity of that land. And also, we have, we have a historic relationship with that land. We reject the false narrative by white agriculture, with the contempt it deserves. That land reform can only be successful if it is implemented on their terms. And I think this is founded in the belief that they think that white people are the only ones who can farm productively. Um, concurrently with this, I also lastly want to propose that with the expropriation of land rights. We should also look at the expropriation of water rights. Since water is the key resource that can unlock value of land for black beneficiaries of the land reform process. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Eh, number two, eh, from the left. Eh, introduce yourself, sir, and then launch into your presentation.
Man, bullet, so, we, in, my, Sally, I, I, eh, the, bullet, eh, o, kubekino. Ikamalam, no, go, so, we, ngili, Charlie, ni, so, kum, slaw, was, eh, pick, eh, begi, kuma, as far, eh, beg, referee. Eh, on, and, we, sbege, apa, si, skalo, si, tu, baskala, ngenda, we, o, klala, as, na, klala. Um, as far, eh, we, eh. Umaspala wetu yastugula, oyasbamba, maspala ngendawo xala, asisbeka. So snes khalu xkulu. Shtala umxhaba, sumanawo xala, umsagalu kona ngogabana, wafuma nemise benzi. But basula nemise benzi ngangayo xala. Umaspala wetu yala usipha umxhaba. Umxhaba yao utrasisa, mashtala umxhaba asnigese. Esu nashtalo xkulu, shtala umxhaba, ndiyabulele engos.
Seabongga, uh, over to you, sir, and you may introduce yourself.
Engos kakhulu, dada. Ika malam tingu avela, wa kwatuta. Tingu nyawa oza utasha, undayela, ungonusha, utkarekaz. Umxhaba ngobenda manzakhola. Sizokala apa dada, nisbonasi dapa pamgwe nujil. Kwayas sangu zulala apa. Ndiathemba kubanani, dada djemba nisbizilapa. Ndiathemba twas sangu zotritikalashapa. Sisuka impuma koluni. Sipata iswa kuhulume nde we ANC. Othwe ngo impumlo, kavanda bamshope. Sasupacala glenda u. Safi kana lapa, sasuanzuli iswa kuhulume nde wa kavanda bamshope. Is trato zukwe, ezokiwe yapo nisuka kwa mna, disuka kwa namna. Zinga, zingaka, ezabanda bamnyami is trato. Zinga, wangbi motoi wan, ene kaisa yo, zia sogolugamba is trato niswani. Engayo kuhulume ndo mshope. Iyo nandepangibanga bantidende zomapa. Sis nguwa sapa kumintrezwe. Umxhaba wetulo, ukhulume ndo mshope, osenzela yo, osipatinati. Asingoba lapa, tinasi besingaba lapa. Umxhaba, ma uyele kuti kubango wetu. Ukhulume nde, ma gautatumxhaba ubuisela kuti ngaphandle kwenbu yekezo. Londo loya ifunwa, basi besipota, si besistini na, umxhaba wetulo. Obanga bukhulume nde we ANC, ebenga patuanga, okanga ibanga tsalanga ngongo impumlo. Ebenga wasukuti, ababo pe, wabo bo, pa kavanda bamshope, kwaspa ubalamxhaba. Asanzo jala apa, umxhaba wetulo. Eni, dikolele, sikolele, lukmilinga, empolo zidi tongi, umxhaba wetulo. Siza ulue la, webandu na bamshope. Naata yo mi chale. Ayo mi chale siza ulima, jaga de lima. Siti kavanda bamnyama, kavanda balima, yopa. Abandaba mshaba baliba, nuga desicha, desituzo, kati pinapata matana. Si betina sisicha lilanga. Yapena ba intzomi, klo ndolo. Ie efekoni para mile, isa ba intzomi, londo lo. Engosi, dada. Wango ni kandilento nisaitata, jegeni aleno. Engosi, bawa.
Thank you so much. Um... Unjoba be ngshilo, nje dada. Ugo ti, sisoni mamela, ngembela, ngoba ekonstushu. Iyoli ti. Oma situaba, umteto, umteto, no ma imopi. Abandu mele baba nofo. Kudo umteto no, esu tuaba. Um, click as, sendi buwe. Uh, ika maba?
Ika malam masbulele.
What?
Masbulele, madiwane.
Masbulele. All right, masbulele, thank you.
Eh, lishala efriti npekoatnawi. Eh, nditi pambili, kwa kchatoa kumxhaba ngapandu kongbu yekezo. Ke sie kusoloko singa ma kezo, apesweli nilitu. Palanda wale, lishala kuwyo mna kukho, indawo kiwa kuisa ndipanyana. Eni bona, ibali plase, iltili no mlungu. Abelu ngbayao kapha umxhaba. Ngenjongosoba, nabefunuslu, ngsele, indawo basala kus. Koko bana bezes duvu, okanya be samenda. Weena, umdomnyama, tawya payani, ukhulumba, fneka. Utumbe umdomshope, koba kala lukaza obancha, weena tawya pa umnyama. So londo layo kongoku, inbonsukuti. Umxhaba ma obu yeke ngapandu kongbu yekezo. Sishosie, yego kuna tuzi, baska mkelekanga, kweni nisweli, tungoba kala lukungo wetu, natchi no xhaba. Eni, uku ya kumxhaba ngapandu kongbu yekezo. Aslini lang bana oza obuiswa, nanga ipinilje, lamlala mbik, ngivuti. So ndiathemba, nayenabani na ofuna umxhaba obu yele banduin. Yaku yenzala, londo layo, through parrot papers. Eni, kufleka sthamli lekui National Resources, smanaya kulumxhaba. Nanjengabantu, abanga bani khas kumxhaba. Sia ke usoloko singe na, antwensweli, tuchinda street wa njengaba sebenz. Umsebenz wetu, basi slayif, umxhabe nwe tu. Diyabule.
Ah, devela borala boma. Kiala, bohaka, kaza, zahumpio, nupirumanata, zelhumpio, nuluku, alukulemo. Na karalu, bata, regualu, naraparamente, ayto, kupiru. Kwanana maspala ro, namur, deur, ur, tuktangate. Hauru abu, ro, batala, batala lefaz. Bago na six by twelve or eight by four. Ubu ipotu, musi wetu elfoa. Wa hutiranka one, hau na sephe, wa haka, kama, nsepe, edi. Hauru abu, bago hula, bago ture, bago bletu, lo, tiri intizi. Seksi kubai, gela, agavamente, abusetidilo, sabatuba, baruna kuhubone, kundaha ture, amadi. Hakina kutoala, fene, thank you.
Hello, good day. Ike is Kerrol Rouse, um, Willemson. Ike is Van Baketberg. Ike nogalso ba, yagro problem many um, municipality van Beigre Vier. Ala, et vos giald, da was giald gewis, da was vani baizen giald gewis. Ma, the baizen komne, tite na vorani. Usi um meetings ha, ditwas gezi, da was grond for us. Ma grond eti tevorage komi. Da was gezi, us moet um... Vera vega dran et, in, odi um... How's the means now? La long, um... Ja, or iko esis yes. Toth us gezi, rait, the ground van moi place was beskikbar, i booritit beskikbar gestian. Usi tal, maatsha, talayi ti polisa for us gestir, perilse polisa itala for us gestir. Da was kantsa posgerage wis. Ala et vos gezi, us moet um... Ika, ika no me vora, be makaka, kene. Us moet, uh, 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 us kan... Ika, ika no me vora, be makaka, kene. Mo nikvera gen? Hmm, okay. Oh, ike is the fish. Tai menso, as bezig mit bedro, van aleve koop die grond, eganitno somapronte zine. Aleve koop die grond an plaas boore. Warele for us kage. Ta ble menso opi strate in Baketberg. Ta ward menso kosage ge, ma neti wat giald et. Credit, yeme ni covid nineteen, eti kiners hunger gelain. Ma di municipality ge for i menso, wat et, wat vekejdis, wat ek wale. Di parlemeng, moet onmiddalik net na Baketberg tokom, ena plan komak, menai menso. Ti tu tri da, et us vare fifty range kera, even sas us one hundred range kera of three hundred range kera gekupet, dan kera us thirty units. How come, now vela leve eskom skulpki? Which is wrong, ale mo na deregma. To us palikis tokan, to wordet gezi, nee, um, di municipality besti, der kanim in ons parate van si isana meeting, si stand aktri, dear, how come? Di maye stand aktri, dear, as us a meeting midon wale, how come? Omde daale ni eerlik mit us ashi. Et voil, da mu te plan gema, wo da. Van us, sakalnawan van towi defini, sewa af, vaaisa. Ma, di baizen komi, da was towi million giald ge ge. Full di municipality Baketberg, ma wa is di giald? Ale ma kstrate reg, ale ma parker reg, ma wa is baizen? It kanisowegki. Et voil, da mu te plan gema, wo.
Okay, now, thank you so much. All right, um, uh, the next person, you introduce yourself and then launch into your presentation. Colleagues, I hope you don't take, uh, the numbers, the stickers are away with you. Um, stickers, after you have spoken, drop the stickers in the box, eh? Please. Over to you, sir, introduce yourself.
I'm Chille For Ten, I'm from Beigre Vier municipality in Baketberg. Um, Chairperson, I would like to talk about, um, the quesi about, um, the covid nineteen. During the covid nineteen, there was a temporary shelter.
So we'll have a problem hearing you. Just drop it a bit and just stand back. So don't come closer, just stand back. There you are.
Okay. Chairperson, there was a temporary shelter, which were implemented by government and the president. Um, the municipality closed down on the sixteenth of, of this month. And yet, um, the people are roaming on the street. I've got an IDP here stating that, um, the municipality has given two million range out for beneficiaries for the covid nineteen funds, that was, that are the funds that has been used. Um, now sit us with the problem, the menso wat in the shelter gebleed, moet itgesit wo. Aleke gene, aner yinko, me di burgemeis, et hofiel, tiake male belove. Hai gan anhi ri menso, wen di ausbelo, wen di ausesge, tot en meti baaisa gebougan wo. Da is gene, ya tekez, us vega, nshlu, sa wani burgemeis, asen et noy beskikbari. Municipal besti, isi beskikbari. Ie is plana enme han, van erwe wat beskikbar is. Beigre Vier municipality verkoop die grond an Nigerians, Somalians, and Chinese, and Viva. Ale gene on for us brown menso nee. Ie is erwe, is omen by eleven twenty erwe, beskikbar in Baketberg siya, ie si plana enme han. Et parate good, et bedaimetik, et ingale, et gan, gan frava to good. Di maye, he is selling our people, but he's a khalit maye. He's a maye for his people, he's saying he's a maye for his people, but he's selling his people. The maye is just there to earn his money, he's not there to serve the people. I want parliament to come there, to pick, to picket back and see what is going on there. The people that is working in the municipality are corrupt people. And we, as the members of Picketbug, can prove it, engosi.
Um, engos kakhulu, xala ngapambili, nomza nutas. Si bulele, nange etu. Um, nomza nutapa, sorry. Yes, bulele, nange etuba, eh, nisni galon. Eh, ita malam duutula. Eh, wa kwakulu. Eh, di lala, ewad nine, panskalo maspa, eh, isalda napen. Ipamamente, ay lap, twenty eighteen. Go to line. Sazis fagi, is paramisu, zetu. Eh, singo lombut, we economic freedom fighters. Ukoba neyambe, ne uchinza lomteto. Ukoso squads, ubu esa. Umxhaba, wetu. Kapandle kwenbu yekezo. Eh, nilapa kwakolo. And ya, nova nijalisa, ngiklashale tuna, kuba imalia ba kafu. No kuba ke kutahala, sini ndile, umxhaba wetu. Kodwa ke, kuba seni lap, sisa opinda. Eh, sis fagi, is paramisu zetu. Umxhaba tuma shumi, eh, mabini, aneslan. Ma ofunde genoslo. Is kaba sokan. Ukhulume nde. Unes bo pelen, so kulungi sa. Ukunga lingani. Eh, kwa ngapambili, ngokwenza, imi tetu, ezaguti ilungi se, ukunigezewa. Ngokunga lingani yo, kwen veliso zo umxhaba. Is kaba sesbini. Umxhaba, izimbiwa, na manz. Ma unigezewa kubantu, kapandle kwenbu yekezo. Ma kususwe, umxhadi, westad. Ukuse, ufunde gen, goslo. Ukhulume nde, ma kubengwe, ojo ngene, no umxhaba. Ne veliso zo umxhaba, zasanzanza free. A manz izimbiwa, no umxhaba, ukuse, kumkamle, monke, abantu, ngokulingani. Agokwene, ma kususwe, is kajana, zo umxhadi, westeng, singa biku. Umxhaba, ma obuyele, kubaniga zba wo, ngao, lomzusu. Kaloma zisiya utasa, sialukasa utzizo, kumxhadi, kuma shumi mabini, aneslanu, nezikajana, esite, sa zankajana, kase nsa, siabule.
Seabongga. Right, eh... Have you not exhausted the, the contributions today? Eh, Askabang? Askabang? All right. Um... Okay, Ben Bozan Jiguti, Sigopinenda. Um, Safi gala, ukensi, parliament, alayi konala. Um, Galawa Nyaga. Twenty eighteen. So lbozuti, is kona nistingo. So chinza lomteto. Kwa nomsin, donji, kwa nomsin, do kona nistingo. And then, in your numbers, ninety years, kona nistingo. There is a need to change the law. Particularly this clause, section twenty, twenty-five, twenty-five. They reported to parliament and said, indeed, they want this section amended. And then parliament says, okay. Go back to them now, eh, with a draft bill. Today, there's a draft bill before you. Asa kulume manji, siskuluma ngende pamgwe nju, esithla, eseseithla ngansi. Before we go back to parliament to say, finally, this is what the public is saying. And this is how they are saying it. It's now in black and white. It isn't that context that we are here today. Um, right. Ngalutata tu manji, nja tu. Oh, zo fo isan, jaba zo fongala, nglata tata mungefongala. Ah, inzo, inzo son pinda, pinda, nansaboni. Are you not going to repeat yourself? All right. I think boni isan. Are we opened? Kono be, la be fagindemiam. All right, you're number one. You're number eight. Oh, I see. So usu number one manji. Twabokala, bababo, aboktrina, bababo kala. The last ones, eh, become the, the first ones. So you're number one. So puti, you're number two, eh? All right? And, eh... All right, you're, you're number three. All right, konda, kono be fagintenjo, ifagi lewe la ngapambili. All right. So you're number four. Sisi, we're number five. All right? All right, and kubegenge. Get at the songe, so, let's go for. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, in that order. Just, yeah, right, six, seven, eight, nine. Have I not covered all of you? I think I have. Eh, can I take nine? That, that is, then completes the... That, that is then completes the rounds. Agreed? Agreed. I also take nine. In the, I don't think I will even get to nine this side. All right? Okay, it's one, two. But, three, four. Yeah. Five. Six. Eh, seven, you on the, this row, seven. This one, yeah, seven, not this one. Seven, eight. Eight, 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 I know, Sisi, yeah. And then I want New York. Unless they, you, you. Is another New York? No. There's already spoken. Come again. Ah, no, 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 no. Oh, no, 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 we'll take the questions, Emi Anga. After the meeting. All right. I've, that's eight, eh? So we take the last one now. Number nine. You're number nine, yeah. Colleagues, I think we have done justice to this, eh? Ever not? I think we've done justice. So it's nine plus nine and that completes eh the submissions. The oral submissions, agreed? All right. So let's take, let me take you in that order. And I'll, I'll start with number eight, who's now our number one. Thank you so much.
Okay, sure. Can I touch it myself? Sure, thank you. I am Anam Numbula from Friedenburg and a member of the Economic Freedom Fighters. I support the amendment of section twenty five to expropriate land without compensation in the following terms. The state should be the custodian of all South Africa's natural resources and relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize state ownership of natural resources. The settlers must give back what is ours. Our people live in school and have no provisions to sustain themselves because there is no land. Land is the gateway to economic freedom for all African descendants. And I'd like to further reiterate that no compensation should be afforded in the process. Thank you.
Parliament, the people. Do you see a one, a gun, a chochifan? Eh, dingaba, Ella, I play, FL drift. Pan's, we have a lot of people, we call it, we call it, we call it. Nam, the pan's, we have so scarlet, a man, a foot. Si, bulela, who are you, tenes, eh? You so sad, eh, is Carlos Z. Sign, who's a, we, parliament, they say, tell, but.
Konezo tata more details including the telephone number, the cell number yako.
Okuska kultan.
Sebong, okay. Eh, yes, Sisi?
Ah, ma ndibuli sana kumshla nga pambina. Ute taya uonel, e ni fani, tilapa kule owa tka owa treg, ape white seat. Ah, tata indi ma yomshla dinzi ma, ndibxungu, izti ma se tusi ngabanda bamniama si pele tu. Ogo al, kaitse pitlavan bamshaba pumi, kubaba ifnu luni sa fana uza kuabe South Africa. Sangabatatu, sangabazin, ketlaxa bebe kwelezi, nganawe, sangabazin amshaba apa. Apisalda ana kunya headcars ez means, ez ngashali bandu, ez, ez, ez shalin komo. Kubaleke obonben komo, noba nobombom tu. Kishala kuwa white seat, ndja kuwa white seat nenda utokse plakaskam. Ifeva tata uchulmente wetu, ba maspala wetu beskatalel indi inshala yabanda bamniama, ebela inshala inma joto mde, alapla, ablapla e white seat. Ivini toilet, uchulmente estolas ni kumshaba, sisamu zakeela, uphin ufmanze mzingi, nishala ku thurum. Kloturum, nabanda ba itena basala ku. En ufmanze majori tavo still akom tu painge lai. Indi ma inshala si pile salda na, kubaleke umdom xopye modan umdom nyama, rezili zule tu eh. Kitela uchulmente asnretis, kizopela.
Mkela makoba. Ikamalam ndingosia mkaela makoba, inshala kawa twelf, ele nfini. Indo si kela ayu, andyazi noba abana apoka anye, nizbe kwe apa, imeyo koyote spila fanskuayo? Noba nilapa, kubani ya baba nyakza fana basi anvoteng, andyazi. Ben kela ne as tati di na leni, nango nasitula indweni. Mnagleni ndawendiku ya, andikendo ba abana, sifun kumshaba nka, andikendo abana ma sakeleni artip, kubi artip, mnangasufikele la kuyu. Glenda wendiku ya, na twenty four years, artipin, itzali ndelwe, ndwanga pese kwe nine years kuzi ni afika, eleven years ba ni afika kuyu. Nkitela kumshaba nka, sitkuazu zakeela, uba abana eh, asikuazu inshala indaweni eh ye, kuyati eh ye, ningabanduma shambi, niba nine, ukuyaki iten. Sizele, sizele, sina bana kwe tu sina ba, sittinga indawu, ndwanga manja. Noba ne sitin uzo puma kukuwenu, nchengamba nseko se kay, kipumi le kay, ndishala ku amtu. Apo umtu, atan, umtu toytanda, ubona songa senamban. Atundumban, uba abana wena kuazu seven zasgeti, yeniyakazu seven zinzo zake. Ka usanze kengayake boxing, umdonen kengayake mbuwe, kuba lokwe, muzale kwe. Siteli indawu, uba ninako, uba abana nesfage lumba na manzi. Ka uba ninako, uba ninako, sosbonel, uba abana sokwen zandoni, noba sishala panje kuamansu, nomba nenah, sizo kuazu zthutela, siteli indawu ka.
Uuma uso covered, ngalo ujutu so covered. Um, just to stand up and say, ubani onkavile, ubani onkavile, and then ya bongo shalipants. Sena zutunga zupende, kantu oya covered.
Diabuli sana, asala ngapambina. Isaba ngati si choi thuru elini, sisongi, namdesuka Swatland, ape mama speru. Sinalu ngayake sisongi, e mama speru, xige satoytoya sisonge sa zapuma e plot. Ez plot, zite u puma kuazu nazozive buspiti, isan kentele zupuma ngazupikoza, banya bandu bazo, abasu ele kayo, abathese bipumi le kwa tu, abakuazu zufumanagoba beko. So asasazu bazapeli lapi, ezasabando kwa bazu eleka. Still, kusekui toilet, ez ngenabantu ka, glenda wu. Ne yati, ez ngenabantu, patu kustil, kukwaba ngabatigi inda uzohlala. Nda nikona, still indawewyo kiwayo ngoku, asiasige ukukwya kwayo ba isa uketa bateni ona. Pati sia wa fanjamach, ba i, isa baba ngabanduma xope, bazaba glenda wu. Siyasitenga kakulu inda uzohlala, nden sinale ngagi ombane, ombane uso lisaka ku. Utu uteng ombane ke hundred rand, ufuman ombane we seven ti rand, unayasbe teti rand begepi. Utu uteng owe ten rand, ungen se boxing, we five rand, awayas, maspala walapa e Swatland. Neng ngagi omsabenz, tinasusuwa kuindauza se Eastern Cape, sifunde yekona, natise u puma goden, pati iluimila lapa ngapanjia aslas. So ba ulas iluimilitetwa apa, ngapanjia kunzima kuti. So sijwa natizi age, because of Africans as kuazu we prata, utungo uteti English, ape umlungo pendula Africans. Shekango kumnanti glen, ndin glenda wendiku ya, tipunu kena nomsebenze, apa ku covid nineteen, because of indi nde domdom nyama. So sitela nisnretis e bandu, aban ku.
Now, osukuma ya, ya bongasis, osukuma ya melashutu utining, sebongasis. Utining, utining e bill, e pambwetu. Eh, ipu clause, okulumagio naglebi e pambwetu, Sisi xule logo ni. Ebi, ubanu ndelain, who is next? So you are next. How uteti e bi leba?
Dingukaya ndetu.
Kaye ndetu.
Inshala ewatwan, emidilpos, panspos salda na municipality. Se itasa kakuli bill, section twenty five, sibulele parliament yabantu, bibui ile, yazo prelukuti. Isakubegeka, isa u pugumbel umtripe, sitengozi. Ogusbi ni, two ministers esisa zetela, because ez ni yasba, four, four months back. The reason yoba bandu ba tebafunu beka, beka zelaga, ile challenge yoba ngaba, kudilele bi. Noba nanini afwa, chembas teta, sena zia zola. Four months back, abantu, ayaba tujula ile municipality for the challenge. That is why city agent li implemente ni ngoku, kani suga, I'm sure, kani suga bana ukubazela, nchinda wesimbalo, ni kukumbel. Ogusbi ni, two ministers esis request tayo, tinga kya mitlaxala, eyo kala e housing. Sine plotsi, ze ira geze eight hundred. Zinayo zyoki infrastructures, nitadi top structure izinku. If nigenza njalo, ni ayas nanani, utu maspala kange unashinala apale, unashinaluti, maspala gayenza ngileta, ileta ka, kwa kiwe eight hundred houses. E project endala, ekwa pufune ikri kwe, nale eyo kala project five five one. Zayenza, minister ma ingenelele, secondly, requesta minister of NH, minister kwe temandache, magange nelele, kukwazu kufakwi mbanje, because eh, challenge. Wine di, 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 di sensele bandi ifake. A challenge eschonga lanayo, ka utoytoya konakalizi nukoma municipality, because abana ba fast rate. Now, minister magafa mbanje, klama joto, baba manin zaga, if uteta apa ngi two thousand, uteta kwe zmi wa tge two thousand. Agakwazlo maspala kauvumi, banga ba, abantu, abathupeka yo, mabuyele, kueskom. Because akazu kain, now ma ingenelele minister, kua zupimplemente, kukwazu fakwambanje, kwe, kwe, kueswa, please.
Sebong, and, olondelayo, next. Utining xlegas e bi, eh, draft constitution eighteen amendment eh, bill published in January eh, this year. For both routine and, and oral submissions.
Eh, aina, eh, molwen.
Yes, sir. Us, us thule, you introduce yourself and then launch into your presentation, sir.
Eh, ikamalam ayabonga, tonis, inshala Eli Black, kumokxala, eh, Felgrave. Eh, ndiambolela, parliamente okokala, ngon tumela kuti, nizoma medis kala zo zetu, kuzis kala zo sininzi, sina zo sininzi. And ngoku ziyasaga, zesa zangabandu ababo, emsanz, sibe singabandawa ra, sengabandawa nyama, ka sifuna ukuwai. Indwen zegayo Eli Black, omshaba okona, umnitsi. I think twenty seventeen bebe xige izizza payana, right? Sa kwa bazo skulula after best, ba bestikele iziza, but still, maspala uphin wasbegela mikata ku, uba uzosizofa, uzosibegela iwoke payana, ez izezit. Sizi bege kwe ziza. Kwe ziza ez, utia kafuni iwoke ez zolan, ez zozonelela. So ama, abandawa nyama, abandawa nyama, basogoli iswa ngadoni, tinasi kwa zuzakeela okokala. Sina wamanda ozsebenze, la sia ziwaa futba umdom nyama nyasebenza, unamanja. So idoni, uteno ondo ukamende, angasniku omshaba wetupek, and then after asnikele omshaba wetupek, asano kwa waguwa ma si thi. Omshaba asnike wona, asano kwa kuza kela, ka kaseba eh, nao ifla kala kuza kela.
Kuluma omshaba, and, umunye, umuana, biga kulutre minutes, we go umundo kuluma e constitution. And, manje, ne kuluma omshaba, eh, ngo wana do. Kuta ge, Indonesiani tasputume, ngoba lebi leonezuti nikale omshaba, se izona le, uteta ba. Usos thule ge ba ba, ikamalako, and then ujutu, ujengadoni.
Ya, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Itumelen Donald Cosinewa. Yeah, I'm originally come from Northern Cape, in the district called Guruma. But I'm current Christian in Saldana, in other Saldana municipality, in Watwan, in Megalpos. Uh, I'm personally agree with this, uh, section twenty five. Uh, but I have questions, uh, to parliament. Uh, as one of the active youth of nineteen ninety four, who are on the ground, make sure that you are mobilizing people, make sure you are voting for a government of national unity. And then, we promise, the government promises us to provide us with a free and conversary education, we never get it. Because from, at the moment, there's only a youth, current youth, who getting a free education. The age of eighteen to thirty five, but our current government, they forget about the youth of nineteen ninety four. Majority of us are turning forty four or forty five years this year. Okay, let's, let's go to a issue of land. I think the issue of land need a skill first. Number two, we need equipment. So I want to ask the same government, how many colleges, agricultural colleges, already built? Or you go to build, we are busy building at the moment? And how many, eh, people who are qualified or have a diploma of agri, agriculture? To do the land, because of, we can't get the land, but you are not prepared, skill, or mechanism, or equipment to do the land. For example, in Watwan here in Megalpos, there's a man and woman, who are good when it comes to a business. But they don't have enough place, or land, to do their business. Because you can go all over, all of us go to look for job, can do, can do a business, but the business, the land is all about a property and farming. And then, eh, when it comes to es- skill. When you get the land and then you have a skill, it's easy to do the land. Because we have, we go to do farming, where we are not, we know that, we do what we got to do. Because those white people, during those, those years, they take their own children to school to do, eh, 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 go to eh, agr, agr, agricultural colleges, to get a skill. So my concern here is education, our parliament, or our government, must make sure that they provide skill, and that they are fighting corruption. Because of, if their corruption is continuing in this country, because it's like a, a daily movie in this country, it's happening each and every five minutes. So deal with corruption, make sure that the money is available to get the equipment and get the skills, so that you can do the land. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Um, land is an economic, eh, asset, thank you.
Molwen bo tata.
Yebo.
Noma keli tuzu, ditlala Eli Black nam, sisa uteta indoyiwa. Eli Black snenai, sia tineseleka, nyani Eli Black singabandu abamniama, kumaspala wetu. Kuko izin zupayeza kiwayo, ez izin, eschongo bazakuwenska. Wiyakuazuwa kusenziniyako upumi, utwa upumi lenzi, approve lenzi. Wye kuamaspa, wye nileta, utwa approve. Kotaka wile kuamaspa, utwe aunanu, right? Wye ke ganjalo, uni kwe lom, ushala loku, ka ushala loku. Uni kwe inu umseke, njo ndi noma keli tuzu ndje, uni kwe inu, shabe, ekasanti. Isndibsonba le sipale sandi, ne kota inu eh yam, noma keli tuzu, sinalu ngani, koyo ilungi sapaya, unguwaya, kupungasi lo Africans. Ube wune F number, yako ogusbi, yoba ufumene inu, F number leo yako, itu ge thuben, sinalu ngani Eli Black, sitela ukeslu nselo lolo. Ke lobo kholi natchone, e modulasstulo kidume disa, lakali inaki onkarabe zetu.
Sir, to made this.
Eh, lenaki supporta section twenty five. The reason why kerekai supporta is because of, lasti laron, now we are now facing gender based violence. And we don't have enough spaces to build the facilities, sa bato bale hori bata tsavela kde, haba abuse you. Renali di challenge esedi inti modulasstulo, ze ilu hori lerona, diar hatela reba cha. Ha ri kuno yeho ta maya, ra kui tuta for agriculture, ka hori harana lehati. Rerona ra ba ta, hona lerona le tu de, ho, ho diraka ma buha arona re pera ike, mo di, plekenze le hori, nili yeho te lenaki lehati la ha, rili diriz. Lenamodulasstulo kerekai kiala buha hori, kupa lorna rili EFR, re, re, should say section three. The state should be custo, custo, the state should be custodian, custodian of all South African natural resource, inclusive of land, mineral resource and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and con, cost. Cost, contest to analyze state custodinesship of, um, natural resource. Modulasstulo ronara re buha fortune early rili yonetanki.
Sir, to made this. The next one.
Eh, diabuli sana kebo ba o, abo pese le parliamente. Eh, ikamalam dinguzenzile, ifani wongwa.
Sorry, eh, on a point of order, uno obaba, kukona no ma.
Oh, no ma, eh, diabona kuba, sivin ngameka ku, iklaisha linchiile. Eh, mnai ndu, nduzu uteta kakulu, indwen di zeleo apa si, si tunyuwa, abantu ba se pitibek, okanye, picket bed. Eh, eh, picket bedki, aguko ndawyo kshala. Eh, msabenzikona, banya abantu ba shale brokwe. Abantu abanizi, ba ebatatuage, kule loktaoni, ba ufa kuma olweni, ba maspala yaba kupango ba pinde brokwe. Aguko ge, nama choto mbege pa. Eh, pitibeki, ba funa ne, nao ma choto ba banba kona, omshaba, maspala kafuni kau. Ya uteki isa ka, izin, lukaiso kile, usniga ama pulo ama plasi, bazo faka banba bo, abasu ke ama plasi, nabanda ba tal. So inchoo kuke pitibeki, ngela u governmenti, aga samuz la ndela, ez, ez, ez dorobisonke. Eh, eh, picket bedki, inkulule egos, ibone tvini. Bobao, nanmoma, e parliamente, ndiakela ge egos.
Eh, utining omshaba nseswa, uyepeti bill, apo eh, draft constitution eighteen amendment eh, bill. Kuluma o section twenty five.
Eh, ma ndibulele, kussection twenty five.
Yes, ya.
Eh, ndibuma eh, picket bed, kumaspala we gravi. Eh, eh, picket bedki, sina abantu ba se picket bedki, sitheli pansi, kotalu. Kotalu lo olu keli se picket bed, asinayo indawekshala eh, picket bed. So zubone nomkuku eh, picket bed. And ke eh, picket bedki, abafunu sniga omshaba, oko sa tienzi swaga omshaba eh, picket bed. Ukusuke la go two thousand in tetin, owo akuba omshaba, satiswa omshaba, sava ni, satiswa namshaba, sava ni. Sisape tge, iri reti sasasasisi zufuma na, kumaspala wase picket bed, sisape tge namshanchi. Ogusbi, ogusbi satiswa omshaba se picket bed. Eh, picket bedki, indawu, uti ureta.
Batine ba ndu ba se pickenbed ngalebi.
Sorry?
Batine ba ndu ba se pickenbed ngalebi. Ngomtete, oh, mtechwana do, souberai.
Mtechwana do, souberai.
Uyepeti ebi. Ya, ngalo ngonjana le.
Eh, eh, picket bedki wa, chembas tunyu, sibasi zerafo section twenty five. Si tunyuwa, ko, 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 kwe tala, nestili ngai eh, picket bed. So banga fuyaga ku, luge, tala ba, si ulutu sile, umbyalezo e parliamente, kubantu ba se parliamente, abasmelewa. Kabashala banga pambina, ba se parliamente, abasmelewa. So banga fuyaga ku, kuwangenze le sili, sili kameka ku. And ke, kolezbi ni, dibuyemsebenzin as number ne, ombane wase picket bedki, sibuyem si iti zero, uti ombane uten rand, uti zero point seventy. Kolezatu, kwa tu ombane uzo lungisu, ombane oka lungu na kwe picket bed. Usambo kulu zero point seventy. Kunzimba upaya, kupatiskapu nupake msebenzin kwa sogus. Sinalu ngani ke picket bed, and sifanwe, kotalu lo akule picket bed. Asas, noba itrafige picket bedki, sibenzza omsebenzo, obi, uba sibenzza itrafige ez nteleli, or sibenzza itrafige bandwi, ngoba sibizwa itrafigi, abo sishala kudasela ngakw, egos.
Sebong, omshagas. Uwenu ndelayo, manje, so ukubel, ngeti. Ubano ukubel. Alright, so, banga abasalisis, eh, it's yourself, yourself, and three, one, two, three. And four, oza babuza ngapambina, selle four, selle four, manje, ngeti. And, yes, zukute ba, batining alebi le pambwen, thank you so much.
Ba yedang kivositer, my name is Linda Moos. Ek is ma so driweke terf ingesweer, ma ek kanoni pratashe member of parliamenti, ek kan pratashe community. Ek will baye dankisheve di gelendhi, that parliament, the aid wege findet, om te kom na di menze tu. Medi amendment of section twenty five of the constitution. Mineyevositer, i worukla di menze. Alapra di insto wasi di amendment of section twenty five ni. Ma da pra di bilo friskok vani menze rekte. Di menze wat onged, onedruk in di veskis, petikule depege virmispaliti. Weh de ris de issus op moy plasi, peket boberg. And da is ok, vorige hervorming zaake, wat ni afgehandelis di, di ovroos oledi, Mississ, Johanna. Wat ok egon hervorming zaake het, van har bruuse twinkles, wat onbehaag, of har ansoke do net. Van di plasi op peket boberg. Di vorige leyes, voleli na mnomi, wat ministers is van egon hervorming, was da, in iye yeme kerke. Ma da ni afgehandel ni. Das pa yeseit om te hor, da di ovroos oledi, ma si het ni di gelendhi gekrei, om har egon trifte kreni, te kreni. Ek will terfkan, na, dan vil ek kan na di vorige egon hervorming zaake, wat pa yep positif afkanis. Di en grootste hervorming zaak van Matsikama, da e pla, eh, di presidenti, di plasi orhandig, en egon orhandig. And da, this play, this, this victory wat os betling, as di parliament, and ok di land of South Africa. And da di menze sa egon, wasi net, egon wat kreeze, wat di lebes fatwa is ni. Da is egon wat kreeze, wat water het, wat, eh, eh, boerderi het, wat mine rechte het, and so more. Das en van di beste egon hervorming, wat South Africa kon oik nog gekreet, of dat ai menze kon ok oik gekreet. They receive a farms, not a farm, a farms, next to the Ole Van Storing river. Where they receive agriculture land, salt pan egon, nabi di seer, ecotourism can take place there, they can do mining there, they can life, do livestock there. That is a real land, and that's what the people of South Africa in the other areas want, if this section twenty five will be amended. Then I want to come to my own life. I'm a coysan, not a coysan, the last minute, one minute. Ek is a grikwagsekind, ek kom van North Caaf, van di plasi Pampoon Poort. Di prefta van mi opa goeki, len ok da, di hez, and di hez ofan di famili wa da gebone, sta ok. Ek hop and vertrou, di amendment will kan gepaswo, so that ek kan my egon, klin kan inhandig. So that ek kan, met my famili, ok kan benefit, van di amendment bill of section twenty. Six, what? Six and twenty five.
Good day, everybody.
Good days, my name is Impiwechantis. I'm residing in Watfor here, the back, place called Tiasbul. Uh, yeah, uh, I'm an ANC member, member in good standing. Uh, I'm here to support amendment of section twenty five, uh, comrade chair. Comrade chair, the other a, a amendments remain within the clauses already be indicated by our leadership, comrade Vivid, I won't, I won't repeat that. But the reasons was not enough that you was put you to fall. The other reasons why we are amending all this, comrade chair, is because if you go from Saldana to Fidenberg, you will see those big hectares of farms there, where the land there. That the people in the apartheid years get, the white people get from the apartheid government and that, on that years. And they claim, the Saldana municipality claim that there's no land for our people to build houses or everything. If you go to Langa Pan, you will see the white people, it's only them have some real estates, and all the why our, our black people has been put into sheds and small spaces in Langa Pan. But they still claim there's no land, whereby there is land for our people. That is why we are very happy for the amendment of section twenty five. Because if this bill can be amended and approved by government, it means that our people can then participate in the mainstream economy. They can have some shortage at banks, in order to, to, to get money from banks, also to go, go on with their business, especially our black farmers. Because they are, they're one sided with small pieces of land, and they are not being recognized. And I hope that it's not only today about the land question, that government will come to us. Because this community in Saldana is in the corner, if you take the land map, it's in the corner, you're not coming to us, we're happy when we here. But we ask other government departments also to come to this side, because yes, a lot of things happening under this DA government, whereby our people are being oppressed. We still oppressed, we still in apartheid in this area, I thank you.
Thank you so much. And, next.